The November 20th, 2012 City of Troy zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Before we get started, I'm going to read a brief primer that we read before every meeting that gives sort of an outlay of the methods that we use in hearing cases. Now, the Board of Zoning Appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors and peers appointed by City Council to pass judgment on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty running with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. The Board will hear the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the chairman will verify that the petitioner is present. Then the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. The petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the Board and explain the justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the Board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on the request should raise their hand and when recognized by the chairman, come up to the podium. The speaker should identify themselves with name and address, indicate the relationship to the property in question, for example, next door neighbor, live behind the property, et cetera, and state whether they are in favor or against the variance request and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairman. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertain to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the chairman to speak at one time. At the conclusion of the public comments, the chairman will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the Board. The Board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or table, meaning delay, the request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes for approval are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the Board's decision to the Oakland County Circuit Court. Those of you that are here tonight, I welcome you to our meeting. As we get going, I'd like to go through the roll call. Mr. Savidin, can you call the roll for us, sir?
Mr. Bartnik.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Courtney.
Here.
Mr. Fisher.
Here.
Mr. Neal.
Here.
Mr. Lambert.
Here.
Mr. Stratt.
Agenda item two, approval of minutes for the October 16th, 2012 meeting. I'd like to inquire if any Board member happens to have any questions regarding the minutes or comments regarding modifications. Seeing none, if I could see, I have a motion to approve.
Chairman.
Yes.
I would like to move approval of the minutes as presented.
Thank you. May I have a second?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Mr. Savidin, can you call the roll, call, rather, excuse me, call the roll call to approve the minutes?
Certainly. Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Stratt.
I was not present, abstain.
Mr. Bartnik.
I was not present, I'll abstain.
Thank you. Moving forward, item number three, approval of the agenda. Are there any last minute agenda items that a Board member would like to add or city staff would like to bring forward, or are there any changes to what's written? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and move forward into Agenda Item Four, Hearing of Cases. We have one item before us tonight. Mr. Savidin, can you give us the workup on the matter before us?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Did everyone get the packet that has the photo, the aerial photos? Is that in, is that on your hard drives?
Aerial.
One second.
I agree.
I did not.
Okay.
No. Just this one.
We do.
I mean, I saw this, but as far as a hard drive.
Well, this one.
Yeah, right here.
That's an aerial.
Okay.
We received this one.
Is that the one you're referring to, sir?
No, it's another one, meeting presentation one that, I apologize, we've got a different, a different system that we use for Planning Commission for ZBA. And if you allow me just one second, Mr. Chairman, to check something here.
Sure.
Just one second. As I suspected, I'm fastidious about cleaning out my deleted items, and unfortunately, I deleted an item that I probably shouldn't have. But nonetheless, let me pull up the full screen here. On the screen in front of you, you see a layout for a proposed site condominium. It is, it is a proposed project under our one-family cluster option in our ordinance. First, I want to take a step back and kind of start from the ground floor to explain kind of why, what got us to where we are today. The applicant, Joe Maniachi of Mondrian Homes, is here this evening. His engineer, Jeremy Carnahan, from PEA is also here. They submitted a, an application for a site condominium development. It's on Beach Road. It's on the west side of Beach Road, just north of Waddles. It's a property that has been speculatively planned for a site condominium for some time. In fact, there's preliminary approvals were granted years ago before, I've been here over 10 years, and it was approved but never moved forward as a site condominium before I was hired here. But nonetheless, Mr. Maniachi came before the Planning Commission with a, I like to call it a traditional site condominium development application. Was, it's relatively simple to, simple, similar to what you see here with a stub road with a cul-de-sac and eight units. Okay? And that's permitted under our ordinance. The design that was proposed included the removal of a significant number of trees on the property, which is permitted under our regulations. The Planning Commission voted to postpone the item to give the applicant the opportunity to investigate other design options for the site. They were concerned about drainage, they wanted to preserve some trees, et cetera. The applicant agreed to study options, development options, tools that they could use to preserve some trees to make the site more in keeping with what the Planning Commission was talking about. So what they did is they looked at our zoning ordinance, and there's an option in our zoning ordinance, the one-family cluster option, that permits additional, it permits more flexibility in the layout of properties, of site condominiums. It allows a lessening of setbacks, it allows buildings to get close together, and more flexibility with the tradeoff that you provide more open space and theoretically preserve more trees. So Mr. Maniachi and his engineer spent considerable time trying to come up with a design that works. Now, one of the provisions in the ordinance allows a density bonus if you, if you are able to preserve 50% or more open space on the, on the, on the site and earmark that for, for public use or use of the residents. So the applicant has redesigned the site, now proposes 10 units, and proposes 41% of the site to be used as open space. I would note that when you, when you look at the, at the drawing, just let me, let me pull up full view here, there's a, there's a bubble. It's, it's to the right of the screen, but it's to the north, it's the north side of the property, it sticks out. In order to make the, to make the numbers work and provide more open space for this property, he's contemplating acquiring that, that, for lack of a better word, that bubble to the north from the, from the budding property owner. That helps him provide more open space and get to some of these, some of the requirements. But what he's seeking is, the next step in the process for the applicant, because it's a one-family cluster option, and I just want to, I want to note the section, section 10.04, it's the one-family cluster option. Because he's proposing the cluster option by ordinance, the Planning Commission is a recommending body, and the City Council is the approval body. If it was a straight site condominium, the Planning Commission would be the approval body, but, but they're not. So what they're seeking, in order to qualify for a density bonus of 20%, they have to meet the threshold of 50% open space. They're at 41%. So in order to even be considered by the Planning Commission, because they don't meet that 40, that 50% threshold, they seek a variance from the zoning Board of Appeals. Now, having said that, in terms of process, the next step in the process, should they be, not to put any pressure, but should they be successful in moving forward, the Planning Commission would, would make a determination whether it's appropriate to recommend approval or not, and then ultimately, City Council would still, would still have to approve the development. But before they can take it to the Planning Commission as designed, they, they need that variance from that 50% requirement because they propose only 41% open space.
Thank you. Is the, can the applicant come forward and with any of their representatives or staff? If you would, sir, just, you don't have to sign in, you just merely have to state your name, it's just part of the record.
Joseph Maniachi from Mondrian Properties.
You're free, sir, to make any presentation you'd like that you think would be helpful for us to review.
I believe Brent pretty much went over all the details on the site. It was at the behest of the Planning Commission that we revisited the site. We did have a, a plan that would meet all the city ordinances as a, with an eight-unit site, but it did interfere with cutting down a lot of trees along Beach, and so we went back and looked at the plan. We tried and squeezed the lots as small as possible. The biggest problem is if I get any smaller on the lots to get to the 50%, then I think I ruin the integrity of the Beach Road homes and the adjacent subdivisions. Right now, the depth of the lots are right now 135 feet by around 90 wide. That's a little bit smaller than your, your B zoning in the city. So that's why we're seeking the variance so that we didn't have to bring, we'd have to take another 10 feet off the back of the lots and make them 125 feet deep. So then I'd end up putting smaller homes on the property, and it just wouldn't be cohesive with the surrounding neighborhoods. Any questions?
Thank you. What I'm going to do is we're going to bring it back, and then if you'd stay up, actually stay up here at the moment.
Okay.
There may be some immediate questions. I'm going to open up the issue before the Board. Mr. Courtney, do you have a question?
Yes. When I take eight and I add two, that's a 25% increase, not a 20.
According to the zoning standards, it was 20% increase.
Where do you see that in the zoning standards?
I believe that was, that was something that we submitted at the beginning. I thought that would meet, or meet the regulations. Am I incorrect, Brent?
Brent, can you, can you check the text actually of the code?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Anyway, if you took off one of these lots, you probably would meet the 50%. If you took away Lot Six, that still would leave you with 11 lots, good size.
It'd leave me with nine lots.
Nine, instead of, I'm sorry, nine instead of 10. But that eliminates one of the lots and gets you back, I think, close to 50% or at least closer.
In order to get the, even get the 41%, I had to acquire the property to the north of the development, and the economics just don't work out with nine lots. At 10 lots, it works. At nine, it doesn't. So if I weren't able to get the variance to do something new and different in the city, then I would end up going back to your standard eight-lot subdivision and improving it as, under the standard engineering codes.
And you don't think one additional lot makes a big difference?
It won't work out. I won't, I'll get the increase, but the financial setback to buy, acquire the property to the north doesn't work. So there was no reason for me to buy the property next door to give the extra, to get the percentage, and then I wouldn't make my 50%.
Do you have any idea what percentage you'd be at if you had nine and didn't acquire the additional?
I don't have the calculations on that, no.
How much, how much land was added by adding the piece?
I think Jeremy might be able to give me a answer.
You can come up if you'd like. You can bring anybody up to speak if you'd like.
Jeremy, want to?
I'm Jeremy Carnahan from Professional Engineering Associates.
Good evening, sir.
While he signs in, Mr. Chairman, I can read that provision for you.
Thank you.
It's, as I indicated, it's in, it's in section 10.04. It's, it's a section titled "Density Bonus," and I'll read what the paragraph here. "A variable density bonus of up to 20% may be allowed at the discretion of the City Council after favorable recommendation from the Planning Commission based upon a demonstration by the applicant of design excellence in the one-family cluster development. Projects qualifying for a density bonus shall include a minimum of 50% of the property to be dedicated open space held in common ownership."
Thank you.
It's just under half an acre.
Excuse me, sir, you're saying just under half acre?
Yeah, I'm purchasing just under half an acre.
Okay. One question, I apologize if this was answered. At this time, do you have like a purchase agreement or something of that nature on that parcel?
Yeah.
You do, okay. Are there any, excuse me, Mr. Courtney, were you done at the moment? I recognize somebody else on the board, but I wasn't sure.
Yes, I think up to 20%.
Okay.
Does not go as far as 25.
Mr. Stratt, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did. I recall that at the Planning Commission meeting, we were concerned about the common area being utilized by all of the neighbors, and the bubble that was presented as part of the site actually cannot be utilized by everybody else. And that was one of the comments that I recall that we had made at the Planning Commission level. So that is something that does concern me personally, myself. The other thing I wanted to ask you, what is actually the variance that you are requesting? What is your hardship? Can you tell us what the hardship is, what the basis that we could, it cannot be economics, okay? You understand that?
Totally. It's the preservation of the existing trees and to be cohesive with the neighborhood along, along Beach Road. In the original eight-lot subdivision, most of the trees along Beach Road get eliminated. So, I mean, it was to preserve the, the natural features of the site is the biggest hardship that we're trying to protect.
Okay. Okay. So it's the Beach Road trees that you're trying to preserve.
Integrity of Beach Road.
That's causing you to actually reduce the percentage of the space that you were asking for?
That's the big one.
The 50% space that you're asking for?
Well, the, the 50% that I'm asking for the reduction is because if I went any smaller in the lots, then the lot integrity wouldn't be cohesive with the neighbors either, or the integrity of Beach Road.
I'm confused. That's your hardship, then, is the smaller lots?
The small lots, yeah.
Is that, that's your hardship that you're saying?
I'd like to keep the, maintain the lot sizes on the area, plus save as many trees as possible.
But you can maintain that by reducing one more lot?
I know I cannot, because then I wouldn't be able to buy the property to the north. So then I wouldn't have to.
Economics can't really play a, a role in your hardship.
I understand that.
That's why I'm trying to ask, I'm trying to get, try to find out what the hardship really is, because I see alternatives.
Trying to maintain the integrity of Beach Road is what I'm trying to do.
Okay, but you're saying you can still maintain it with one less lot. Is that correct?
No, I'm not saying that. You're saying that.
I think it's what you're saying.
You can't do that physically?
I'm saying that if I have to lose one lot, I, without economics coming into play, that bubble will not be.
That's not an issue here.
Okay, the bubble will not be a part of the development, therefore, I won't even need, I won't be near the 50%, and therefore, I won't be able to.
Okay, I'm through.
Okay, thank you. In other words, just to be clear, and stepping aside from terms of hardship as we use it to describe a zoning, a zoning issue or a land issue accompanying the land, what you're saying is that if you were to lose one unit, essentially one home, the economics of the project no longer make it feasible for you to do it?
Yes.
Isn't that what it comes down to?
Yes.
Okay. And your hardship is that you can't put all 10 units there and keep the trees and green space along Beach. In order to do that, you have to get the land to the north.
Correct.
And, yes, okay. I just want to make sure we get that in the record because of some, some of the give and take back and forth. Mr. Clark, I believe you have questions?
Thank you. Okay, so I'm trying to understand this, and I, your, your consultant did a wonderful job with the paperwork. I've been on this board for many years, and I think this is probably the best presentation as far as paperwork to the city and to the Board. So congratulations on that, I was impressed with that. But let me just kind of get you to rephrase this request on your part in light of the fact of this, this bubble or this additional, I like to say, you know, additional purchase. So if, if these were all one parcel, would we be at the 50%?
No.
We're still below?
We're at 41%.
Okay. So, you know, I, I, I read, reread this several times, I visited the site today, and I understand your, your concern about losing the trees, and they're really the, the, the feel for the, the site for that particular neighborhood, it's a beautiful area certainly, and those are large homes, and there's lots of trees, and it's just a beautiful drive along there. So the economics don't work with one less unit. Is there additional opportunity to purchase more property to add on, pack onto this site to get closer to the 50% threshold?
I do not believe so. I know the neighborhood of the north is, that's as much that I can negotiate on there. The neighborhood of the south is pretty much tied to what, he just bought the property as well, and he, I negotiated the easement across for drainage purposes, but that was about as best I could do there. The homes behind it are, well, there's one person adjacent to it, to the, to the backside, and there's a street that comes close to the backside of the property, too.
And I guess the other question, I think in reference to Mr. Stratt's point about what he referred to as the bubble being accessible by other folks, I see that the sidewalk, and it seems like the retention pond area, that there's a sidewalk there, but if I'm looking at this correct, is there a sidewalk going back to that nature area in the, to the upper right? Or, okay.
Yeah. That was supposed to be left as a, actually a nature area, a total preserve.
Untouched, yeah.
Untouched.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes. I think if you did away with six, you'd then have access by everybody else going back there, and if you did away with the bubble because it wasn't economical, you'd still be at 40 or 41%, and everybody would have access.
I haven't looked at it that way. I, I have not looked at the economics on that, to tell you the truth.
Nor, nor do you know the size until you'd actually, you wouldn't know the, whether it's 40, 41% or?
Not, not at this moment, unless you, calculations on that.
Yeah, it would be about that.
I'm sorry, sir, can you, I, I just want to make sure we get everything in the, in the recording, and I couldn't hear your answer.
Yeah, eliminating a unit and the additional purchased property would probably yield a similar percentage of open space.
But people would have access, and you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be adding 25% and calling it 20. I, well, I guess we have to go through the hearing, but after that, I would suggest tabling it and seeing if that's feasible.
What Mr. Courtney is referring to is that if, sometimes what we have is a matter that comes before us where through the discussion, more thought is given to, we need to step back, do some more calculations, et cetera. So what we merely do is take the option of tabling something and then look at, have you, give you time to, to do the number crunching, et cetera, to look at it to see if it's something that you would consider. That is an option. We can still progress with the hearing, but he's just bringing up that point as, as a possible option, and I just want to make sure you understand what he's getting at.
I understand what he's getting at. This project's been brought forth Board many times, and I may, actually, this change came about because the Planning Commission asked for differences. I'm not inclined to go for a postponement only because of, it just keeps getting delayed.
Sure.
And designing by committee is not always the most effective.
Right, we're not trying to design your priority.
I understand that.
And I know some of the give and take and suggestions almost seem that way, but what we try to do for the most part, because our mandate's very limited, is just if we can make it work within the existing zoning code and everybody's happy, you know, we don't, we don't give a variance, so that's.
If I swap out the one lot, I'm still going to have to come for rezoning.
That's true.
So I'm not going to make, meet the zoning ordinance. I can look at the economics on it and see if that'll work, but is that just going to be a delay of a denial because it doesn't meet the hardship requirements?
Well, no, I can't, I can't, I can't answer that. I can't, I can't speak for the Board, and I don't know in the end what the answer would be, so I can't, I can't look in a crystal ball for you.
I understand that.
And I'm not saying at all that you have to delay anything, I just want to make sure that since the matter was brought up before you procedurally what he was referring to. It sounds like you've, you've obviously, on this property and others, I'm sure, have lived through that for other reasons. Naturally, we continue to discuss this tonight. You don't have to decide anything now, but I wanted to make sure you understood what Board member, Mr. Courtney, was mentioning.
I do.
Mr. Clark?
I'd like to inquire of staff one thing, and that is, I visited the site today, and fortunately, Kathy in the office was able to direct me to the site. I was looking for the sign that would normally be out, but I know this is a different type of request, as she pointed out, alerting the neighbors that there was, you know, consideration regarding the site. And she wasn't sure if the sign had been put out indeed, number one, or if it had been moved. Apparently, she was aware that recently, some of the signs have been moved after a short amount of time. And having said that, then I just want to know, well, if the sign was never placed for the neighbors to be aware, I know there might be some people here for the public hearing, but were they, was, were the neighbors notified by US Mail about tonight's meeting?
Everyone within 300 feet would have been notified by US Mail for tonight's meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Stratt.
Yeah. I, I'm not as concerned as much as the percentage as I am the intent of the percentage. The intent of the percentage was that it would be shared by all, the common area would be shared by all people, and we're not doing that here. We've got that, that bubble there that cannot be shared by all of the people, and that's where I have the big concern. That's one of my biggest concerns, one of the biggest concerns that I have. So that's why I'm really, and I keep going back to that, and I remember that coming before us at the Planning Commission, and I thought that was brought up there as well, but my recollection could be wrong. But that's where I want to just explain to you where I'm coming from and where I'd be coming from at the Planning Commission level as well.
Mr. Lambert? Or Mr. Bartnik, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, a question for staff, and I always appreciate Mr. Stratt's cutting to the quick and asking for the petitioner's hardship. For, for our staff, when we're dealing with the open space provision where we're trying to preserve as much open space as possible, is the zoning Board of Appeals looking just at a hardship for the petitioner, or are we also looking at efforts to try to preserve or are we also looking at efforts to try to preserve trees and green space?
Do you want to answer that, or?
This has to be treated like any other variance. You have to provide, you have to make your decision based on the variance standards, which are practical difficulties and the other provisions set forth in section 15.04, just like any other variance.
So when, in the provision where it talks about vegetation as one of the factors, that could be considered to be a hardship as far as the petitioner's intent to try to preserve as much of the trees on the site?
It could be.
Okay. All right, thank you. That was it.
Excuse me, Mr. Bartnik, I wasn't sure. Did you have a question? I saw some talking between the two of you, and I wasn't sure.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No problem.
I have a few questions. Do you have the, why don't we have the eight condominium prior plan in front of us to look at?
Why don't you have it?
Right. The, as I, as I read the density bonus, we're supposed to have this parallel plan in front of us to compare it to. So when you mentioned this eight-unit site plan, I have no idea what it, what we're looking at.
We do have a, we have a copy of the original eight unit.
If you'd like, could you bring it up here, and we can kind of, we can share it, if you, if you don't mind, and we'll give it back to you, of course.
We should.
Thank you. Gentlemen, I'm going to send this here away first. One question while they take a look at that. And you may not have looked at this. I don't know what it does to project costs or any, or anything of that matter, but in regards to the location of units five, six, seven, whatever unit it might be, has there been any value or consideration looking to perhaps shift one of the units more to the space that you want to buy, thereby putting the green space more to the northern central area, or is that just in your mind, pretty much an automatic cost increase to the project? The reason why I just mentioned it is the location of the green space would be more accessible. But I know probably the road gets longer and such, so it may not make sense, but it's just something I wondered if when you were looking at placing the units on the property, you know, how much you played around with it?
We were kind of limited with what we could do in, in trying to maintain as much open space as possible. This is just where, you know, where the engineering wanted it to be as we started designing it, so we didn't really have enough room to get anything vastly different than, than this layout in there.
Okay. Mr. Bartnik?
Thank you. I'm going to be fairly critical of this proposal because I don't think it meets any of the requirements of the density bonus. And I think really, when you take into account the other properties in, in that particular stretch of beach road, I think this actually detracts from the other premises. And I'd actually refer to what is called the, the density impact right in the ordinance, which is "The proposed type and density of use shall not place an unreasonable impact on the subject or surrounding land, or property owners and occupants, or the natural environment. An unreasonable impact shall be considered an unacceptable significant adverse effect on the quality of the surrounding community and the natural environment in comparison to the impacts associated with conventional development." So that's at B6, I think, of the ordinance, under the, either the, the density bonus or the cluster purpose. I, I think what, we're trying to use a creative use of the, of both of those features, but I think the net result unfortunately is, is detracts from what the purpose of the ordinance is. Can you address any of that? I think you're trying to get too many pieces of property, too many units on one piece of property. And it might work in a different section of the city, but most of the, almost all of the properties up there, each of the houses has some sort of an architecturally different significant design. They're large properties that take advantage of the elevation, of the, of the direction, of the, the topography and, topography and everything else. And my concern is that just at least on paper, this just looks like a, you put a lot of time into, and I hate to be criticizing you in this manner, but it, it is just not a real creative use of the ordinance or of the land.
Well, I think that you make my argument for me is for the variance is because that if I went with, if I got to the 50 percent, then the lots would be extremely small. So that's why I'm asking for the variance, so I can keep the larger lots, so I can put in the bigger houses that would meet the, be cohesive with the neighborhood around it. Preserving as many trees on the site, I think that just enhances beach road property all the way around.
What trees are being preserved?
Stuff along beach road, the patch in the back. There's some 24-inch oaks, some 36-inch trees on there, a hickory to the north, some very well-established big trees that would be saved that are in, located within the open space. During, in the eight-lot subdivision with the engineering standards, basically not too many trees are standing because of the, the way it's laid out.
If you focus on the number of units going into the property at nine or 10, to, to me, the density is, goes against the proposal. I mean, to have nine or 10 units on that piece of property, to me, is too dense for that particular area. Those are my thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Stratt, do you have another item?
You know, my recollection was that during the planning commission meeting that we had, that was one of our big concerns at the planning commission was the swales that you had developed in the front, and that you were destroying all the trees. And I know that there was also discussion as to the property on the south edge. You had quite a grade differential there, and we had quite a, I mean, you had some real site problems that you had to work around.
Right.
But, and I appreciate what you're trying to, to actually do, but again, I'm going to go back to my comment, is the intent of the zoning ordinance as far as, I understand it's a common area that is to be utilized by all if we exceed and get the maximum area that we can, the 50 percent, so everybody can enjoy it. And see, to me, I don't see that. Now, that's what bothers me, and I keep going back to that. But you'll be coming before the planning commission as well, I guess, I think for this, so, if you do get this approved, I think. But at any rate, I just wanted to let you know where my, my feelings are.
One question for you. And I'm not sure, because of the, because of the characteristics of the land right now, in other words, an undeveloped site. And I've seen this in some other develops. My, my, my brother actually lives in a development that's a limited homes in Bloomfield, and at the rear of their properties, they have kind of a, a nature pathway that kind of runs behind all the sites, and allows them to, well, it allows you to walk to your neighbors, for example, but it also allows you to get to other areas that are part of the small development. I can't answer this question from looking at this drawing, per se, but in order to make that accessible, is that, is your site conducive to something of a feature such as that? If you, I understand what I'm getting at?
Like a perimeter sidewalk?
Something like that.
That wasn't planned in the site.
Okay. All right. Because there is a difficulty getting to the, to that rectangular piece of land to the northeast. And, and just looking at what you have and what you are able to work with, and my own, just experience with my brother's house, I, that idea came to my mind. I don't know if it was something that's even feasible here, but I just wanted to suggest it. Are there any additional questions? Is it time for the applicant? No? Okay. What we're going to do now is, I'm going to ask you to take your seats. We're going to open up the public comment session, allow any of the surrounding property owners or people who have an interest on this to come forward and speak if they'd like. How we'll do this is normally we, we'll have one person come up. You'll just have to state your name for the record, and then you can take a couple of minutes to express your thoughts on the matter. Please try to keep them germane and direct to the item in hand. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this particular matter? No? Okay. I wasn't sure if either one of you gentlemen were here for, as far as neighbors or whatnot. Okay. Feel free to come up, sir.
My name is Ali Bezir. I reside at 4855 Beach, which is the north property. I'm probably the most impacted by this more than anybody. So let me go over my thoughts with this. This, and I feel kind of guilty because I enabled that development to go on back in 1999, when I sold a piece of my property, my three acres, to the, to the north of me, to the south of me, to the, a strip of 65 feet. And even after I sold it, I tried not to close on it, but I was threatened with lawsuits, et cetera, so I closed, and we were going. Because it's kind of brought to me, it's, you know, the plan, I came to the city, to the planning department, I looked at the plan, and I'm sorry, I'm going to take probably more than a couple of minutes because you all had comments I would like to address directly.
That's fine. We don't have a lot of speakers.
Okay. So the, I found that the eight homes, it's as the old plan in 1999, and the plan that was submitted earlier by the new developer, they're as boring as they come. It's a cookie cutter thing. Here is, here it is, eight houses fits in, meets zoning, we're done, we're out. Actually, I'm very, really, very impressed by this developer as he was asked, when I attended the commission, planning commission in June, they asked him to go back, be creative, don't give us this boring side of eight lots. He went back, and I'm sure, you know, I work in, in a business type of environment, money is, you know, it's spent a lot of time and money to get to here. In the meanwhile, after he was asked to that, I was approached to see if I'm interested in selling that, what you refer, some of you refer to as a bubble, which is probably, it's prob, I'm attached to that site in Troy as, I, I call it my place, my heaven on earth. That's because I don't know if I got to heaven, but the, the way they came with this plan to preserve the trees, and if you guys would appreciate it, if you're interested in my interest in, in the development on our site, the developer had added about 34 feet or 30 feet, I, what's common area, which I would call buffer zone, where nobody can put a shed next to my house, which I spent my life and my wife's life working to, you know, build the house and own that property. I paid for it about $550,000 back in 1995, which is quite a bit of money for a house. It was a tour down to start with. So I, I bought it because of the location, the environment, Troy. I've been here for about 37 years, and I've been living in Troy. I love the city. I love the place, the schools, et cetera. Now, the previous plan, again, it wasn't really, I wasn't excited about it. I'm very excited about this plan. And, and I'm not going to go through, I'm as straight as they come, that piece, if there's, are going to be a pathway for people to have tables and parks and sit there, I will tell you right now, save this guy, the expense and delays, I won't sell it. I don't care what the price is. I will, however, I, I think I would highly recommend that his plan be approved, and just saving those oak trees on beach road and no, you know, it just, I think this blends in a lot better with at least my house, and I've talked to my neighbor to the south, and he's got probably the same notice as I did, and when somebody doesn't show up, I think the implication is I'm good with, with this, but I'm not going to speak for him. The, that's really the incentive when you talk about, and I know there are rules and books and zoning we got to go with, his incentive, the developer's incentive is they're going to come in, put homes, and move out. He's not going to live there. So he has no immediate interest in, you know, making it accept the best. So when you say the commercial aspect of it is, is not be considered, I, I suggest it should be one of the consideration. And 41 percent, the, the shortage in, in that, you know, 41 to 50 is, in, in giving us this, you know, the, the, the natural area, let it grow in a beautiful setting. I don't know that the difference between eight and 10 makes a lot of, i- i- if you put eight, it's really any better. The size of the house, from what I looked at, what they supplied with the design from the first proposal to the second hasn't changed a bit. Last thing, I'd just, it's still related to this. The, you know, he's been through a lot of committees, and I think, I'm really, I, I applaud him for being so patient with these things. So I would suggest that you either tell him, here it is, we're going to give you an approval, go back to the, to the, you know, planning commission, and, but I, I do, I have a very vested interest in making sure as much as I can that this plan go through, not because of the financial gain. I still have my kids who live with me, they're all against it. My wife is against it. I'm the only one because I look at things as a business in value, and this adds value to, to my house, to my neighborhood, not the other way around. It doesn't really detract anything from what I consider, you know, my life savings, that's, and that whole.
Thank you. One question for you, sir.
Sure.
And I believe, just want to make sure you're understood. Your comment was that if the land, the, the bubble, the square piece of land that, that would be associated with the property, if that was in any way developed or made park-like tables, et cetera, you would be against the sale. You want it to be left natural, as currently and unchanged?
100 percent. And one, one reason is, I don't know how often I walk back there to cut the grass because I enjoy it. My wife has, has not walked to the fence, we've been here since, again, 1995, except once. There is a park, a beautiful park to the south with play sets and whatever else. It's, it's just, there is a difference of about 60 to 100 feet on the southern property, and you get to the park.
Okay.
I don't know that there is, there is a need to have a park there, but...
Hold on a minute, there may be some additional questions for you if you don't mind. Mr. Courtney?
Well, I was just going to comment that I thought I misunderstood when, because I understood you to say that if the people that owned the property had access to it, you weren't going to sell it?
Yes. I did say that.
Okay, then, then the access, the piece of property isn't going to be of any value if the people that own it can't use it?
It's a value in my mind, I'm sorry if, I don't know how, what the order, if I can ask.
No, that's fine. Go ahead. You can just...
It's a value to, to, to the neighborhood. It's a value to the city. It's, it's, it makes this a better piece of property, developed property for Troy, I think.
Okay. Mr. Clark, was there anything more, Mr. Courtney? No? Mr. Clark? Mr. Fisher? Anyone over here? No. I appreciate you coming up, and please have a seat, and we'll continue onward, and I'll see if anyone else wants to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the matter? Seeing that, I'm going to close the public hearing section of the meeting and bring this item back before the, the zoning board for discussion. Are there any questions or comments or, or points that a board member would like to make on the matter?
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Just another question for staff, and Mr. Stratt may be able to give his opinion too as well. If I understand the scenario for this, Mr. Maniachi originally came to the planning commission or to the city with a plan for a traditional eight-unit subdivision, which if that had gone forward, this issue would not be in front of the ZBA. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Guess that's pretty much it for me. Thank you.
One question I have for you, sir, is that I know that you had asked them, from, from this perspective is, not you, per se, but the city, asked them to be a bit more creative, to create a, perhaps a, a non-typical development. If they chose to go with a, a more traditional development, very cookie cutter, let's call it that, is that something that won't get through? it that, is that something that won't get through? Can, is that something you can speak to, or is that something maybe you, you don't feel comfortable?
No, I can speak to it. The applicant presented a, I would, I think it was my word, traditional type development with a simple cul-de-sac, a sub-street with a cul-de-sac at the end, eight units, pretty standard stuff, you see a lot of it, not only in Troy, but throughout southeast Michigan, and it met all the requirements of our zoning ordinance, and we recommended approval.
Okay.
Staff recommended approval, and if they came back with that same development, we would still recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have a question of, of staff, and, you know, this is probably one of the first times I've heard this kind of presentation to us, and then here, hearing one of the property owners who is, who is affected, and also under a, an agreement, sale agreement, making statements, is a little confusing to me as far as the role that we have, also, I understand this would go to the planning commission that Mr. Strat sits on, and I know that they do separate work, and they work with the property owners as far as beautification sometimes and improvements and so forth. So, I really just have this, you know, wide open question, and that is, so if we move forward and there's, there's a recommendation to the property owner, or to the developer, the gentleman who wants to develop the site, that at least a pathway is made to go to that bubble area for the area residents to more easily assess the nature area, and I think everybody understands here, there are parks, and then there's just nature areas. I, I, I've been a dog owner for many years, and sometimes you want to just walk, you know, in a particular area, 'cause it's beautiful. But is that, can the gentleman who just spoke in front of us make a, you know, like a precondition, because he certainly doesn't have to sell the property until everything's done on this end, ZBA, planning, city council? But like, for instance, what if the recommendation is a path, just a simple pathway, or even not necessarily a paved pathway, maybe it's a, to keep, preserve the very beautiful, neat natural aspect of it, a wood chip pathway, which is what I would consider an undeveloped, you know, or, you know, non, it's not a, a improvement, it would be just simply beautification. Or even a park bench, which is not permanent, the park bench by its very nature could be placed there and removed in a moment's notice. Is that, is that a hiccup in this issue, and should we be concerned, I think maybe to the city attorney as well, that somehow there's somebody who has a trump card that can be played, that causes reverberation throughout the whole process here?
Well, I, I'll answer, I'll answer one way, then I'll...
Sure.
Pass. I would say that the, Mr. Bezoun, the abutting property owner, is under no obligation to sell that property to Mr. Maniachi.
Right.
And if Mr. Bezoun wanted to place conditions, restrictions, on the sale of such property, he certainly could. And I would, I'm not, I'm, I'm not an attorney, but I'm guessing that if one of the restrictions is no path, and the planning commission says that there's gotta be a path, there's probably gonna be a conflict there, and that's gonna have to be addressed. I would say regarding, I'm getting into Alan Motzney territory here, so I'll say it then pass the mic, but I, I just wanna be careful that we're, that the ZBA isn't designing the site.
Right.
Like, 'cause I think you, you kinda hinted to it, Mr. Clark, that if, if, if the pathway is, is related to the consideration of the variance and, and the standards that are to be considered by the ZBA, and, and determining practical difficulty, that's fine, but I just wanna be, you know, make sure that we're not designing a site, because that's, that's for the planning commission to do, if the zoning board of appeals grants the variance, so that they'll be, they'll be asked to make a recommendation on a future date.
What I was gonna add is, this board always has the authority to impose conditions on the granting of any variance, but those conditions have to be reasonable, and they have to be related to the use of the land itself. Imposing a condition that you'll pass the variance if a pathway is installed, it may or may not be reasonable, that's something you would have to decide.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Courtney?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm still interested in making a tabling motion, but not if the petitioner is not interested in looking.
Sir, I'm not sure if you wanna answer that question, but I give you the option, it's been presented now, I guess, a little more formally, you don't, I, I can see your answer from there, if you just wanna provide it, but if you wanna come up and speak to it, you can. But you do have the option to, I guess, sharpen your pencils for a bit, if you'd like.
This wouldn't be the first time I'd be going back to sharpen my pencil, and I'm, I'm very flexible in accommodating with the city, I live in the city, I've designed many communities within the city, and I do traditional subdivisions, I've done some non-traditional subdivisions in the city, very successful at both. I believe I presented a, a very nice plan for the site the first time, with the eight units. Planning commission didn't see fit that it was a, a nice site, so I went back to the drawing board on behalf of them. I could look at the numbers again, I just don't wanna waste the time for another no, because I'm not gonna get to 50%, I'll have to come back, and it might be 40% instead of 41%. And I'm more than willing to do that, but I need, I hate to say some assurances that, you know, if I design by committee, that it's gonna go someplace, because that's where I'm at right now. Planning commission said, come here, come back and do something different, what would your zoning ordinances, what do we have to do to allow you to do something different? So I went by what is in your, in your ordinances, and there's nothing that allows it to be outside the box unless I come here and get something outside the box. So, yes, I'm willing to look at the numbers again, and as long as I can be on the next agenda item, which would be sometime in December, which is another 30-day delay.
Yeah, it would be, I, one, one moment. Mr. Savin, do we have a meeting in December?
Yep.
On our agenda? What is the date? Can you let us know? I, I don't have a calendar. I just wanna make sure you know it, so you know exactly what it's...
It's the 18th.
It sounds like it's the 18th of December, so, okay. Well, I can certainly assure that you'd be on the agenda, you'd be item A for A, so we would get you in and back. Mr. Strat?
Yeah, I was gonna say, while we're waiting, you're hinging a lot on the preservation of the trees, but I don't see a preservation plan. What I would like to see, if you're gonna do that, and I can't guarantee one way or another, is show us what you're gonna preserve, what are the size of the trees, I mean, that's what you're, you're hinging, your, your variance on, I think, more than anything else, as to what the planning commission, what we recommended, is preserve that area. Well, show us what you're doing. I have no idea. I'm looking at it, and I blew this up to see what the size of the trees, and it's very, very vague to me. So it's, it's very, very difficult to see what you're intending to do to, to preserve. And of course, you know, we've heard this thong and dance, and I'm sure that you've seen it, where developers come in and they say they're gonna preserve all these trees, and the next thing you know, it's all gone, but, you know, I know what you're intent.
I assure you that I'm not that developer.
Listen, I know, I know you're not, I know that you're...
Okay. I just wanna make, get that clear, because I've been doing developments in the city for a long time, and I've done everything I've ever said I was gonna do.
You've been before us several times, and I know you're...
Okay. Just wanna make sure that's out there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, but I just wanna let you know, though, show something that you're gonna show, if you're gonna do it, I don't know if it's gonna happen.
Yeah, Mr. Strat's point's a good one, it's something that occurred to me, is that it would be, if we're gonna work to those aims, having the Ts, the trees, for example, tagged, something formalized...
We have something in, in our archives.
That we would need for reference, it's to go ahead with the reason as to why we would approve a zoning variance, and we would need to attach that to what gets approved. And hopefully, that doesn't take much effort, but we, we do need something in the end, black and white.
There is a tree preservation plan as part of the site plan package, I don't remember if you guys received that or not, but it's sheet, T2, which...
I don't believe we have that.
No, we don't have that.
We do have a tree preservation plan with trees identified and areas of tree preservation.
Actually, can you, can we take a look at it?
Yep.
Still may not eliminate the need to, you know, consider tabling this, but, yeah, I think having a brief look at it tonight would be great.
The areas that were already preserved are...
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'm saying the right yard, you want to see this?
Yeah. Well...
I know, I know we're not gonna use this.
I'd rather study it.
Right, I should.
Than just look at it.
I know in order to, to go through and work under that perspective, we wouldn't be able to proceed with just a hard copy that we're getting tonight and such, but, and again, I can't speak for the board, but if your hardship's gonna be based on preserving vegetation, mature trees, both at the, along beach and in the other areas of the site, and if you're willing to take a look at the property development and sharpen your pencils and such, I think I can say that we would, the board would consider that that is a identifiable hardship. Now, that doesn't mean we approve it, but it means that we are essentially at this point agreeing to the concept of, that you're bringing forward is, in fact, something of a challenge and, and worthwhile to keep. But even though sometimes, I just wanna make sure clear, and make sure it's clear, what I'm saying here is that sometimes you can actually come right out and identify hardship that meets every requirement, but that doesn't mean the board actually will vote. There may be other reasons as the board cannot approve something. But I don't know if that gives you any assurances, or gives you a little bit of something to work with, but I, I can't say, there's no way I can say, that we can say anything like, if you do the acts, we'll certainly approve it. But, well, that's as far as I can go with that.
Gotcha.
Mr. Savin, you have a question?
Two things, Mr. Chairman. One, Mr. Motzney verified that there is a zoning board of appeal, it's a meeting, December 18th, Thursday, it is on the city calendar, so it has been confirmed. And I think what you were getting at, and I in no way want to put words in your mouth, but I think it was what you were starting to allude to was, if, if in fact there is a motion to postpone this item to a further date, that it be, that there be reasons provided to the applicant, so that he's, he's clearly tasked with, you know, with some, with some information to provide, or whatever the, whatever the case may be, just, I just wanna remind, remind the board that, that it be clear if there is a motion, what the reasons are for that, for that postponement.
Oh, no doubt, and we, in the past, we've done that, we'll make sure he has, lack of a better way to put it, his homework assignment, so to speak, so that he knows what he has to deliver to, to get satisfaction, you know, the best shot at satisfaction.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Burton?
Thank you. I mean, there's just a couple other things that would have to be, first of all, I think the record has to be clear that you're not suggesting that if this, this matter is postponed, that it's going to be agreed to by the board.
Not at all.
That's not what you're saying.
I'm not saying that at all.
Okay. But the other thing is, Mr. Carlisle's report at page 25 of the package kinda summarizes the four or five items that, that he had suggested. The phrasing in the letter, or the report of Mr. Carlisle, suggests that assuming that there's a ZBA approval of this particular proposal, that then these items would be considered or recommended at the planning commission. Is that sort of backwards, or are we in a situation where we couldn't put some of these proposals into a, a waiver? 'Cause he's addressed, reduce the rear yard of each lot, reduce the side yard, use shared driveways, use a, put in a path between lot six and seven, those types of things. Are those things that, first of all, would the petitioner have any interest in it? And secondly, is that something that we can put into the, the approval?
Hey. You wanna take a shot at that one?
I'm gonna give you another vague answer. Again, you could impose reasonable conditions on the granting of variance. When you start making a lot of detailed provisions, you're kinda getting into the planning commission's bailiwick, in my opinion, but, again, this board has the ability to impose what conditions, but you have to justify why they're reasonable and why they're related to the use of the land.
All right, thank you. The other question I had, is the 20%, 25% question something that should also be part of a request for a variance? Can that, is that something that would be before us, or is that something that kills anything beyond nine units?
That's, that's not on the agenda for this evening.
Okay. Mr. Motzney, a question, and I, and I don't, I mentioned this in a humorous sense, I don't mean to pit one city attorney off of another city attorney, but your colleague, who was here in earlier meetings, it reminds me of, of a previous matter that came before us with a, with a garden center, where there was a lot of give and take, we eventually got their variance, we, we had to have two meetings, and I was left with the impression from, from her comments, is that in order to meet the land use requirements, we could get pretty specific as to like where something is put, and I know we're not trying to design a site, but in order to go along with the variance, the, the general concept, like for example, an unpaved path, or something of that nature, I was left with the impression from your colleague that we, we had quite a bit of flexibility to attach a number of items, and I'm also thinking of a, of a recent project on Stevenson where we approved the variance, but we also attached certain specific requirements for a berm, type of vegetation in the berm. And so, in a way, it kinda crosses that line, but it doesn't also cross the line, there was a certain intent that was desired. And, and to me, this seems to me, and I would like to know if I'm missing the obvious, please tell me, but aren't we kind of in a similar situation, where we're not designing the site, but we're trying to express a certain intent to help the applicant get where he needs to be and to make it work? Do you have any comment? And I could be just missing the obvious, but I wanna ask that.
Like I said, when you start getting a little, getting into detailed plans, and as a condition of variance, it, it, it's just a question, is that reasonable to impose on one applicant, all those provisions as, as a basis for getting the variance? There's a, it, it goes like this, you impose conditions on a variance, then you get sued by the applicant, and they go to circuit court saying these conditions are not reasonable, and they're not based on the land, or based on the use of the land. So the, the question is whether or not there's something in the record for the ZBA, that the ZBA can argue that, no, these are reasonable conditions imposed on the use of the land, and it's supported by the record, by evidence that was presented. There has to be some basis for imposing those conditions.
Okay.
And, and, yes, it, I guess the point is, if you wanna design specific details and impose that as a condition of a variance, you have that authority, but it's always subject to challenge, so you have to ask yourself if that's a, if that's a reasonable condition.
Okay, I understand that. I mean, one of these conditions is, is something that says that certain trees will be preserved, or everything will be done, I know when you start constructing on a site, things can happen, but, but when we speak of the use, we're talking about something that we might consider approving, but already, if, if I understand the discussion that's been made, is that the use of the land, that extra piece of land for green space or access by the residents, there is a distinct desire to have that not accessible. In other words, it's there, and undeveloped, it has a certain square footage acreage percentage, but you really, we have, we have an adjoining property owner who will sell it, but his desire is that people don't inhabit it, you know, play football on it, or whatever it might be. And to me, that seems to fly in the face of the, the use, and undermines the, the ability to approve the variance. And when you say use of the land, are you talking about that, or are you talking about something different?
Well, it has to be related to the, the land, as opposed to, maybe a simple way to put that, for instance, you could not impose a variance on a condition that only certain people could use the land, because that's a variance based upon, not the use of the land itself, but based upon people who could use the land, it's not, that has, so that would be an... but based upon people who could use the land. It's not, that has, so that would be an improper condition. You can't restrict who can use the land. Whether or not you want to impose a condition that you'll grant the variance if access to the land is prohibited, I guess my opinion is that's probably unreasonable, because it's... If you ever get into a lawsuit regarding restrictions imposed on land, the general rule in Michigan is favors, favors reasonable unlimited access to the land, that that would always be favored over a restriction that would deny the use of that land to anybody. Am I making sense?
Thank you. Mr. Saviden, do you have, you want to make a comment to this?
Yeah, I'd just like to, this, the access to the open space area, the bubble, as I called it, the additional properties, as Mr. Clark called it. I want to get back to kind of the, to the intent of the one-family cluster option. The one-family cluster option is intended to, and there are seven points, okay? I'm gonna briefly read these points. One, encourage the use of property in accordance with its natural character. Two, assure the permanent preservation of open space and other natural features. Three, provide recreational facilities and/or open space within a reasonable distance of all residents of the one-family cluster development. Four, allow innovation and greater flexibility in the design of residential developments. Five, facilitate the construction and maintenance of streets, utilities, and public services in a more economical and efficient manner. Six, ensure compatibility of design and use between neighboring property. And seven, encourage a less sprawling form of development, thus preserving open space as undeveloped land. I guess my point of reading that is, do some, in some cluster developments, is it conceivable that providing a pathway to all residents is appropriate? Absolutely. Is it contemplated in the intent statement? Absolutely. However, is preservation of open space just simply for the benefit of preserving open space, not necessarily providing access? Is that also contemplated? Yes, it is. So I think the point I'm trying to make is, it's really a case-by-case basis. There is value in preserving land just to preserve land. Maybe there's deer, there's squirrels, there's wildflowers, whatever. There's value in preserving it and not touching it. That was my point.
No, I thank you for bringing that up, and it's, what you're saying in a more generalized sense is like a conservation easement, in a way.
It's like that. I would, I would say one thing that, that, um, I would argue, just the common sense, maybe the pessimist in me, is gonna, I'm gonna guess that residents of units five, six, and seven are gonna sneak back there once in a while, lock their dogs, throw a frisbee, whatever. I don't, I don't think that, it's not gonna be chain-linked with a guard tower. I think it will be used, but I think what Mr., I don't want to speak for Mr. Bazun, but I think what he's worried about is, if you provide a pathway there, it's gonna, there's gonna be a lot of people there, and they're gonna be close to his property, or maybe trespassing, whatever. I don't want to speak for him. It's his property, and if that's his concern, I respect it. But I just wanna, I just wanted to be clear on the intent statement that it doesn't necessarily require that there be a pathway back there.
Right. One final comment before I get done speaking is, of the seven points, and I appreciate you reading those, can you read item three again?
Yes.
That's the only one, to me, it seemed that I had some issue with. And I just wanted to read...
Item three says, and again, this is, it's what the intent of the cluster option is. Number three, provide recreational facilities and/or open space within a reasonable distance of all residents of the one-family cluster development.
Okay, I want to make sure it's an "and/or." Okay, thank you. Mr. Stratt? I recognize you, Mr. Courtney, in a moment. Could you, go ahead?
Okay, it's really for staff, either Leo Council or staff, or Brett. I see that we've got Ben Carlisle's recommendations, and we've got the list of his recommendations there. Is this something that should be a part of the planning? Or is this something that should be really addressed? Or could that be, could these items be actually attached as a part of the condition of the variance?
Well, I think we're going back to the question that Mr. Bartnik asked in the response that Mr. Masny gave. I tend to agree with Mr. Masny. I think, you know, we're walking a really fine line there because, you know, as I'm speaking as a planner, not as an attorney, because I'm not an attorney, as a planner, in terms of process for this development, the, I think in this case, the Planning Commission is charged with designing the site. There's definitely a fine line and a gray area between the responsibility of the zoning board of appeals to act upon a variance, and I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. You do have the authority to condition the approval of a variance, absolutely. The gray area in this case is, there is a process pending whereby the Planning Commission is to make a recommendation on a design, and then council is ultimately gonna, is charged with approving the design. So I don't know if I'm answering your question, Mr. Stratt, but I think it's a little bit of gray area. I don't, I don't want... My hope is that the ZBA does not, in any variance they grant, does not take design powers out of the hands of the Planning Commission. That's my hope.
I understand that. The reason why I was asking you that is, none of these items relate to what, the argument here is what the variance is, and that is preservation of the trees, and a reduction in terms of the 49%. And I was just concerned, I know it's gonna come before us and the Planning Commission, but really, the recommendation that Ben has here is really, I thought, more related to, like you said, the Planning Commission rather than the ZBA. And that's why I asked that. You know, can we incorporate that? Should we incorporate it? I think maybe not, but I don't know, based on the arguments that you just presented. So I don't know. I have mixed emotions, but I guess I'm just one vote, anyway.
One moment. I appreciate, I've left you both standing up here. If you'd like to sit down, because at this point, we have it discussing amongst ourselves. And if you'd like to sit down and listen, and have a good laugh at us talking about this, you're welcome to, or you can stay up. But technically, at this point, the way the meeting is structured, it should be a discussion amongst us, and I just want to offer you a seat, so.
Okay.
Mr. Courtney?
Yeah, I, before I get to where I was going, the one thing Carlisle mentions that I think is ridiculous is shared drives. Shared drives lead to bad neighbors. They do not lead to anything other than that. And at this point, I'd like to make a motion that the site can be tabled till the next meeting to allow the developer a chance to review the possibility of eliminating lot six and either retaining or not retaining the bubble, the additional property, and see whether he would then be within the 40, 41% and whether it would be a viable project for him.
Okay, but before I can look to entertain a second, I want to make sure the applicants would consider it. If not, I bet you...
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, point of order. There's an active motion on the floor, and the proper...
Yeah, but we can't really approve a motion that he maybe has no interest in.
This is a deliberative body, and you can't, an outside party is not appropriate to ask regarding a motion under Robert's rules. If there's, you should entertain for a second. If there's a second, there's discussion.
Yeah, but Robert's rules is really just kind of a reference. I hate to put, no, I really, I really disagree. Because I'm not about to put something forth, and then he has no intention of the interest at all. I don't really care.
He was up at the mic and did indicate that he would consider it. He's shaking his head yes, no.
All right, then fine. Then I hear the matter's moot. Is there a second on the motion to table this?
I would second it.
Okay, all right. Is there any discussion on the matter, the merits of it?
Mr. Chairman, I was actually prepared to vote in favor of approving the variance, but I also believe that some of the members of the board do have some concerns about this. I would be willing to support tabling it if not, that we also look at giving the petitioner the opportunity to come back with some information on the trees that he would preserve as one of the alternatives, because some members of the board may decide at the next meeting that maybe the swap out of that piece of property, or that additional home, doesn't make sense for the petitioner, but maybe we'd be more comfortable if we were looking at how many trees were gonna be preserved in it. So if the motion maker of the motion wouldn't mind, I would move to amend his motion to say also to look at information to present back to the board on the tree preservation.
I don't mind, except we already have that information in the city. I believe that's been submitted. And I think the department then should, you know, separate from that, ask the department to give us copies of that information before the next meeting.
I believe we have the information, it just wasn't provided in the packet. So it's gonna be, that's gonna be a very simple thing to meet, Mr. Lambert.
Leave it in the resolution, though, then in case it isn't.
I'm not sure that you saw it, Mr. Lambert, but there was a preservation...
I did see that, yeah. I just wanted to make sure that our postponement was not gonna be revolving around whether that additional home was gonna be part of the package or not.
Yeah, put that in the motion, though, too, so that if, in case this one isn't sufficient, that they can then submit one that is.
So what are you looking to do with your motion?
Adding the tree preservation plan be provided to the board.
Mr. Bartnik, do you still provide your second to that?
When I look at a motion to table, I look at it as a motion to table. I don't necessarily see all these requirements. I mean, it's a really, it's an opportunity for the petitioner to put forth what he thinks, he or she or it thinks might be persuasive. I don't know that we can, I would not second a motion to table that has a number of requirements. I think it's helpful, as part of our discussion, as a public record here, that the petitioner knows what the board members are thinking about, but I'm not gonna second a motion that tells us all these requirements.
That motion is a motion to table so that the developer can provide the information on the removal of lot six, with or without the addition of the land acquisition, the additional land, and that a tree preservation plan be provided.
Well...
I'll second that, just for purposes of moving things along.
Yeah, I understand what Mr. Bartnik's saying. I know what you're trying to do. Oh, I know that in the end, it's very clear that the applicant knows what information he has, and I think if we just had a simple table, then we're fine, but we can go with that. Any other additional comments?
Yeah.
Mr. Stratt?
I just want to make a comment that Beach Road was actually dedicated several years ago to be a historic kind of scenic road. And whatever information, as just a comment that I would recommend, is any landscaping, anything that you can provide to encourage or to show us what your intent, as well as the preservation, I think would go a long way. That's my opinion. But that's up to you, and I'm just stressing, I think that's what you're actually coming in for, and that's your variance that you're asking for. So you better strongly recommend, or show us what you're actually going for, if that's your hardship that you're going after. I just wanted to make that comment before we close. I make my vote.
It's a little out of order, but a lot of things are out of order, but we'll allow it. Are there any other additional comments on this motion that's before us, for either for or against? No?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bartnik?
Just the question of discussing the issue of density relative to the other properties on Long Beach Road. And then also, the technical question of the math, whether we need to, whether we're allowed to go beyond number nine, whether we even could do number 10, or whether that would require an amendment to the petition. Something should be considered.
Before we have a vote on the item, I want to mention to the applicant that staff is available. After meeting during normal business hours, et cetera, you know the drill. If there's any confusion on your part of both what the intent of what you'd like to bring back to us, and if you want to also review the meeting, they're gonna be available online. So I think there's many opportunities to make sure that if there's any confusion as to what is our intent is and type of information that will allow us to get this, hopefully, all move forward in a manner that is in the public good, and a good business decision, and all the rest, let's put it that way. I think there's many opportunities for that, and I just want to make sure that you're aware that our staff will be happy to sit down and assist you. Mr. Saviden, can you call the roll?
Mr. Chairman, before you call the roll, I wonder, make sure Mr. Courtney and Mr. Bartnik, their intent was postponing action on this, not tabling that.
I have to actually ask you quite simply, what's the difference?
Oh, postponing means we will take, it will be on the regular agenda for the next meeting. A tabling means we would have to pull it off the table by, I believe, a two-thirds vote.
No, this would be a postponement.
Postpone, yeah, okay, so.
Mr. Saviden, can you call the roll?
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Okay, sir, we'll see you back on the 18th. And as I said, make use of city staff if you have any questions. I appreciate it.
Have...
Sir.
Have one of your drawings.
I can have you come up under public comment. I'm sorry, do you need, do you want to speak, or do you need something?
No, I need to probably address your...
Okay, well, I'll... Just a moment, and we have a public comment section, just for meetings in general, and I'll just call you up. I just gotta move through a few items. Regarding item five, communications, I have nothing to bring forward. Is there anything from staff, or is there any board members?
Mr. Chairman, since, thank you, since we were dealing with this 41% versus 50%, I'm wondering if staff has any insight as to whether or not, whereas I can see where the Planning Commission and city council would be giving some degree of discretion in future instances, because I'm sure this is gonna come up again with more and more of these efforts to preserve green space and open space, but whether or not there might be some flexibility as far as giving the ZBA some direction, either from city council on, you know, you can look at...